Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of Beaver Creek City Council for January 22nd. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Littrell?
Here.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. And now I'd like to turn over the meeting to Vice Mayor Garcia for the pledge and moment of silence.
Good evening. We have some Boy Scouts from a few troops here. If you guys would like to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You guys can all come up if you'd like.
Before we get started, real quick, walk by the mic and give us your phone, or not your phone number, your name and your troop number, please.
I'm Aaron Steiger, and I'm from Troop 162.
All right.
I'm Mason Blount, and I'm from Troop 162.
Good.
I'm Craig Scousen, and from 870.
I'm Tyler Wilkinson, and I'm from Troop 870.
I'm Joshua Swanson, and I'm from Troop 870.
I'm Neil Thompson, and I'm from Troop 870.
Thank you.
You want to start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would please remain standing for the prayer. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, fellas. Next is approval of the agenda. I had a, I visited with the youth council yesterday, and I invited them to join us this evening, so I'm hoping that one of the council members will amend our agenda so that they can be a pre-scheduled speaker.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the agenda by adding the Beaver Creek Youth Council as a pre-scheduled presenter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make motion to approve the amended agenda.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That means Beaver Creek Youth Council, you are on the hot seat. Would you all like to come, come up front, introduce yourselves, and tell us what's new, what's been going on?
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank Mayor Bobstone for inviting us here to talk to you guys today. And so, to introduce ourselves, my name is Christopher Carenza. I'm a senior at Beaver Creek High School, and I'm the president of BYC.
All right.
I'm Calista Hess. I'm the vice president of BYC, and I'm a sophomore at Beaver Creek High School.
Hi, I'm Tatum Hess. I'm her twin brother. I am the service learning coordinator at BYC.
And I'm a sophomore.
Well, thank you all for being here. Doors are yours.
Thank you. So, just a little bit about BYC is that we're a volunteer group just based in Beaver Creek, and we range from ages from middle school all the way to high school. And we're all about giving back to the community, and we love giving back. It just makes us happy. We love to do it. One of our biggest events that we're known for as BYC is our middle school dances. They're both in the fall and in the spring. Typically, we usually have a food drive for, and then that's for fish or Feed the Creek. And we also, with all the money that we get from the dance, we give it straight back to the community. We try to give first to Beaver Creek, any organizations in there, and then we like to expand to Dayton, Green County, all of Ohio. And so, a couple of our organizations, one of them is, Kelly can talk about it, Hope's Closet.
I'm a little, I'm a little short. So, Hope's Closet is, it serves surrounding counties and directly impacts our county as well. And so, they provide foster parents with supplies that are needed when they have kids come in, and sometimes they'll get calls in the middle of the night and have, and have to take in the kids, and sometimes they don't have anything. So, Hope's Closet provides like clothes, toys, diapers, all sorts of things that kids need that they may not have. And so, we are currently working on a drive for Hope's Closet, and we brought papers that, that show their list of the items that they need. So, some of the things, again, it's just clothes, diapers, toys, books, all sorts of things. And so, we are, we have a box at the Beaver Creek Senior Center, and people can donate the items there. So, if anyone is interested, we can pass out these.
Why don't you hand a couple of them up here, and then the rest of them put back on the back table when you're ready to leave, and people can pick one up if they like.
All right. So, a couple other places that we are in the process of donating to is Soul Center, and that was founded here in Beaver Creek. And it provides outings for our special needs community from the, like, grade nine through age like 110. And I've been to one of their outings, and it was a dance, and it was so much fun, and because some of them, like, once they get out of high school, there's not a ton for them to do. So, Soul Center always provides something at least once a month for them. And another one is the Richardson Foundation. You want to talk about them?
Sure. All right. So, the Richardson Foundation is pretty much like for kids who want to do sports but might not be able to like afford it. So, Richardson Foundation helps with like, for soccer, like cleats, shin guards, or like pay-to-play fees, or like basketballs and stuff like that. Yeah.
Very good.
So, just some other events that we usually do is Sweetheart Dance. It's over at Heartland of Beaver Creek. And we go there, usually we do it on like a Valentine's Day weekend, or in past years we also had, had it on like a Mardi Gras theme kind of dance. And so, we just go there, we talk to the senior citizens, we joke around, we have fun, we listen to music, and just hang out and have fun. And that also just, it's a lot of fun, makes us happy, just to see how happy they are and how much like they love to be there with us. And it's just a lot of fun. So, that's really all about us, that the thank you for allowing us to speak here.
Well, I'm glad you all came, and it was really impressive. On a Sunday afternoon, when football is on, you had a room full. We were in your meeting yesterday. So, I mean, you, you, you all get together and do a lot of nice things. So, I really appreciate that in our community. And I'm sure you know, but while we're on the subject, one of the founding members, fathers of this, of your organization is Councilwoman Van. And so, she's very proud of you as well as we all are. So, thanks for coming tonight and getting the message out, and plan to do it at least once a year, okay? Plan to come back.
Thank you very much.
Everybody knows what's going on.
I'm going to stay.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, that's right. We have a councilman that was a former member, Councilman Rushing. So, that's how, that's how far things have come in your organization. Yeah, absolutely. All right, moving on. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Resolution 18 dash four, please.
This is a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other property interests owned by William O. Ayers with interest by others for the National Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yes, I give you Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you know, one of the products that got approved in this year's budget was a project to improve Grange Shaw Road and National Road in the vicinity of Colonel Glenn Highway. Generally, the project consists of a little bit of widening on Grange Shaw Road to add a, a new northbound right turn lane. It also includes the widening of National Road to extend the, the second northbound through lane all the way to the city corporation limit. Along with that, we're going to be adding a curb and sidewalk to the east side of National Road with the project. In order to build the improvements, we had to acquire property rights from nine individual property owners. I'm happy to say we've reached agreements with eight of those nine property owners to date. However, there is one property owner where we're still, we still have an open dialogue with the gentleman that owns the property. It's located here in the drawing. It'd be the southeast corner of the intersection of Grange Shaw Road and Colonel Glenn Highway. The property in particular, let's see here, there's actually two that we're going to be getting a temporary, which is only for the duration of the project. And once the project's over, it goes away. It only allows room for our contractor to work to, to rebuild this curb and to build a retaining wall we have planned in this area. In addition to that, there's a very small permanent right-of-way acquisition, kind of showing in blue right there, kind of hard to see. It's very small. It's about 44 square feet is what it works out to be. And as part of our process, we always have an independent real estate appraiser determine fair market value. In this case, that was $2,296, which is what Mr. Ayers was offered. We're still, again, working with him to try to come to reach an agreement so we can avoid using the appropriations process. But the passage of this resolution, the ordinance, will allow us to move forward with the project if those negotiations fall through in the end. I should say too, in order for this to go forward, there's two pieces of legislation. The first is the resolution you have before you. The second is the ordinance, which is the very next item on the agenda, and both those are needed for this to go forward. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
You may.
Thank you for the report and everything tonight. So, you say you have some ongoing dialogue with Mr. Ayers?
Yes, correct.
Has he offered a counterproposal for what he thinks the 44 square feet is worth?
He has, and it's a little bit more than we're willing to pay at this point, so. But there's also some other issues. I know he has some concerns. He was requesting that the city does maintenance on his property, which is something we would never, ever do, some items like that. We need to still talk to him about and work through.
Like ongoing maintenance?
Yeah, yeah, that was, one of his requests was for us to cut the grass on his property and take care of the islands, pick up trash, stuff like that, which is something that the city, we really can't commit public resources to do maintenance on private property like that.
Out of curiosity, may I ask what the number is that he's counter-proposed?
You know, his first counterproposal, I believe, was in the $35,000, $36,000 range, something like that. But he since dropped it, but added the other conditions, which is kind of the sticking point at this time.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
We're all shocked. Yes.
Just out of curiosity, did these negotiations with Mr. Ayers start at the same time as the other eight title holders to the property?
You know, they all kind of, generally the same time. What we do is, once we get the appraisals back, then we'll, we'll do a formal offer letter, and sometimes the, some, the appraisals come back quicker than others. Like, on this particular product, there's several temporary easements, which are very easy appraisal, so we get those back quicker, so the offers go out sooner. With Mr. Ayers, we had the one permanent take, which meant his appraisal took a bit longer, so maybe by like a month, six weeks, his offer was behind the others, I'd say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
I would move for approval of Resolution 1804.
Is there a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1804. Any further comments? Saying none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, ordinance 18 dash 01.
This is an ordinance to appropriate certain real estate, real property interests owned by William O. Ayers for the National Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Mr. Moore?
Excuse me. As I said, this is the companion legislation to the resolution you just passed, same topic, and it'll accomplish the same thing we just discussed.
Thank you.
I would move for the approval of ordinance 1801, and move it on to the second and third reading.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1801, moving it to the second and third reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, Resolution 18 dash 05.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a park maintenance agreement with the Beaver Creek Township Park District.
Hello.
Good evening. How are we doing?
Good.
Ah, yes, so like Ms. Lampton said, in your packets, you have an agreement for the city of Beaver Creek Parks Department to maintain and operate the two parcels, the parks that are underneath the Beaver Creek Park District. One being Victory Park, which pretty much sits inside Rotary Park. Rotary's on your right, Victory would be on your left, and the other one is Community Park, which is on Factory Road, just around the quarter from 35. So, in the past, Beaver Creek Township has maintained those pieces, but since the township is getting out of the park business, the park district has asked us to put together proposal and take on those two parks. So, this would allow us to maintain the parks, cut the grass, clean the restrooms, and then also take the shelter reservation at Victory Park. And it also does allow us, if, as the park district moves forward and they come up with and do capital projects, there's a clause in there too, so if they need our help in any way, there's an additional money, they can pay us, and we'll help with those services. So, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions on this?
I just had one, and I forgot to ask. Do we, is there any equipment that they're going to be donating to us?
No, they do not have any equipment.
I was thinking that, okay.
Nope. So, we would just be using the equipment that we already have, and so, part of the money that, as the proposal we put together was manpower and also help with, if any of the aging equipment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Indirectly, this is just the process of the township getting out of the park business. Because the township always maintained the township parks, districts parks.
Yes.
Can you say that with a mouth?
That was my question. I just wanted to see if the township, since they have that, they had any equipment they wanted to donate.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about park district.
No, park, no, I understand since the park, the township was doing the work.
Right.
And they are getting out of the business. So, since they're getting out, maybe they didn't need.
We can ask, but I think some of their equipment, they're probably going to be using for their boulevards, and I think they're maintaining their fire stations and stuff.
Well, it's always nice to ask.
We can certainly ask, absolutely.
Any other comments? Anybody got a question?
One more for me, Mr. Mayor. Kim, so we're getting two payments of $13,000 throughout the course of the year, is that right?
That's correct.
Is that what the, the district was paying the township in years past?
No, they had a pretty decent deal. They were not giving much back to the township.
Oh, okay, so this is actually more than what they've been paying?
Yes, yeah. The park district, they were getting money from the local government, and with everybody else, those funds were going down. They just successfully passed a levy, and so, this money is, so they're able to maintain the parks, and so, that, some of that money's coming to us.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
This isn't directly, it's related to Rotary Park, but when, in the past years, last year we hardly got any snow, but the year before, Rotary Park was plowed immediately. It wasn't plowed immediately this year. I'm just saying.
Okay. Yeah, I think this year, we, we had the snow pretty much fast and furious, so as we entered the parks, that's kind of the last things that, that we do.
But they had a smaller workload at the township, so they could get to it pretty much, pretty fast. And now, we've got a bigger workload, and just making that comment, so it's on the radar.
All right, fantastic. Thank you.
My only comment is that it, the amount seems low to me, but you guys know more about that than I do, for sure, so. But it's a one-year arrangement, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's for one year, and that gives us an opportunity, this summer, we can kind of readjust or take a look at what we did. That's correct.
So, when the event is at Community Park for the art show, will you guys be involved in that, then?
We'll just make sure that the park is ready to go, and then we'll be the liaison, and I'll work with Tabitha and make sure if there's anything she needs, but yes.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve Resolution 18 dash 05 for the agreement with the Township Park District.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 18 dash 05. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, Resolution 18 dash 06.
This is a resolution by the city, Beaver Creek City Council imposing a moratorium for six months on the issuance and processing of any permits allowing dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of medical marijuana within the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, and excluding any pending applications for cultivators, processors, or dispensaries.
Does anyone, Mr. McKeer, you want to?
Yes, council had requested a six-month moratorium on any new permits. We do have, I believe, a couple, three in particular, I believe, dispensary permits that are currently pending. Those are excluded from the moratorium because those were previously submitted, but this would exclude for six months, so council can further determine ultimately how to regulate or control the medical marijuana business, but any of these, you know, cultivators, processors, dispensers. So, that, that's what this would do. Simply a resolution, a moratorium.
Okay. Any comments by anyone?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
My only comments would be, in general, we have talked about this issue time and time again. We've issued moratoriums, we've not issued moratoriums, we've had special meetings about it, information meetings, which have been well received and a lot of good feedback around it. So, I know there's may not be a lot of discussion tonight, but I just wanted to emphasize this because we've had a lot of discussion about this moratorium moving forward. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. And you're absolutely right. This is something that we considered a month or so ago, and we thought we had a safety net with the state not being, issuing any new permits. But with further discussion, we realized that to really be safe, this was the best way to go, and so, that's why we're back at this point again and going this route. So, that said, anyone else have a comment? Do I have a motion?
I would move for approval of Resolution 18 oh six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 18 dash 06. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, decision items. We, we would like tonight to set a three-member committee to review the applications for those that applied to fill the vacancy on city council. I have talked to several people, and it can be any three of us, there's no, but I have talked to a few, and I would like to recommend anyway that we consider the committee to consist of Councilwoman Van, Councilman Upton, and Councilman Rushing. And that gives us all three. We have the mid-range servant, the new servant, and...
What's this?
I'm not going to say it. Seasoned, experienced. So, anyway, it's on the floor for discussion. Anybody have any suggestions or ideas on that? Anyone?
Hearing no comments, Mr. Mayor, I would move to appoint Councilmembers Rushing, Councilmember Upton, and Councilmember Van to the Councilmember Appointment Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Councilwoman Van, Councilman Upton, and Councilman Rushing to this committee. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
One.
One? Motion carries. The, the other thing that we need to do in relation to this, and it's not going to be an appointment of a committee, but those that are on the, are not on the committee need to be thinking about what types of questions we're going to want to ask when we get to the interview process. And so, I hope, hopefully, that the, the other three of us will pick up that legwork and do that end while this, the first three are taken care of. Pardon? Okay, that would always help, because I think it's going to be good to be able to ask the same questions to the same, to all the applicants that we interview. That being said, let's move on to the next item, city manager's report.
Good evening, council. We wanted to bring an update, the last thing that's on everybody's mind. You wouldn't know it with 55, 56 degree, almost 60 degree weather today, but the last winter storm, some of these stats even astounded me, so reading through these, this winter storm number three, as we call it, began Monday, January 15th at 4:00 a.m. and ended Tuesday, January 16th at 3:30 p.m. A total of 21 CDL drivers, one section leader, one mechanic, and one non-CDL driver were utilized during the storm, and crews worked a collective total of 224 hours of regular time and 351 and a half hours of overtime. It's astounding. 606 tons of salt were used during this storm. We are preparing a press release that will go out that kind of illustrates what our priorities are and some of these facts that I just listed. I think the length of the storm was something that was unusual, that it, when it kept, it kept coming, and it kept coming, and it kept coming, and we were unable to get to some of the secondary or the plat areas as quickly as we normally would in a short, say, three or four-hour storm versus a 10, 12-hour storm as it kept snowing. So, we appreciate the patience, but every driver was out there putting in very long hours, as you can see, in that short period of time, with the number of hours that were worked. So, we appreciate your patience, and now we're busy trying to fill some of the severe potholes that were caused by all of it. So, have patience with us, please. Appreciate that. Wanted to mention next also on our website, and we posted some on Facebook, but not as much yet, we do have our video tour that's available. This video tour has a welcoming, discusses parks and rec, or individual, what we call chapters. Parks and rec, education, a chapter on business and industry, a chapter on real estate and relocation, a, a chapter on entertainment, and a chapter on city services. They're really well-done videos, which were paid for by advertisers, not by the city, but it really will help us advertise ourself, the city, what we can provide, the services. Why, why move to Beaver Creek? Why do we love Beaver Creek? From the good schools to the good entertainment, good businesses, and so forth. So, check that out. It's on our website, beavercreekohio.gov. You'll see it on the left-hand side, down towards the bottom, it says, "Watch our video tour." So, check that out. As well, are, everybody, one of our most popular things, our In Touch newsletter will be out this spring 2018. It doesn't feel like spring yet. Well, actually, it does today, but spring 2018 should be arriving in our mailboxes the week of February 5th, so please watch out for the In Touch. And our social media sites, I just want to keep mentioning these, and our viewers, our likes, or our followers are growing every single day. It's outstanding how fast this is growing. We are utilizing this very much for a lot of the information, so please continue to follow us on our website, on our Facebook page, our Twitter page, and we do have a YouTube channel where you can view, just like this meeting, and Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, any of the public meetings that we have, you can view on, on there. I wanted to mention a couple of things that were not in the packet that I just threw in the last minute. The Laffino Plaza Palooza, just want to remind everybody, that's Thursday, February 8th. It's from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. All ages welcome. There's activities here for the kids and, and different things, but this is opening up the Laffino Plaza, so come and enjoy the festivities there. And that is, again, February 8th. And the last thing I wanted to mention is the seasonal job fair that will be held at the Beaver Creek Golf Club Saturday, February 10th, from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. We have these positions posted on our webpage now. Don't wait. We have these positions posted on our webpage now, don't wait, feel free, we have more emergency needs that we want to get started on, some of the park camp counselors and things like that that we want to get a jumpstart on, because those dates come around the corner real quick. So please, visit our website, and you will, can be directed to Human Resources or Job Openings, you'll see it, and click on that, and feel free to go ahead and apply for those positions now. If not, you can come to the job fair. And one, just on a personal note, I really enjoyed, I went to the pancake breakfast this weekend. I was helping out with the Rotary this weekend and serving on Saturday, it was for a great cause, for the Beaver Creek Marching Band, for the uniforms, had a good time, met a lot of people, new people, and so it was really good to see the community support for the schools, and I got to meet a lot of new people and faces, so I appreciated that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Very good, and that was a, that was a wonderful event out there. I think it's probably the largest crowd I've ever seen at the Rotary Pancake Breakfast, but it was, it was nice. I don't have much tonight, I want to thank the Youth Council for being here tonight, thank the Boy Scouts for joining us, I see we got another young gentleman back there, too, I don't know if he's a scout or not, but thanks for being here. We love to see the young people come and see what's going on at the city, so thank you very much. That being said, it is now council time. But we like to start on the right, Councilmember Literal.
I do, since we've all been talking about the storm and the salt, just want to say thanks to our road, wonderful, wonderful road department. They've done an excellent job out there, along with the police, there was a lot of crashes, so. Slow down when it's snowing, but all in all, I think everyone did a fantastic job, so. And our social media pages showed the people were very pleased, so good work there, and just glad that it's fifty-five degrees today.
Councilmember Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, echoing the comments of Councilmember Literal, thank you to our road crew and to all of our staff who keep us safe during these inclement weather scenarios. About two weeks ago, a Beaver Creek legend, Mr. Ed Zink, coached his one-thousandth game as the varsity head basketball coach for the girls' basketball team. He has the most overall, all-time state wins in terms of coaching, with over seven hundred and fifty wins. And he began his first season ever when the program itself was initiated back in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six season, so congratulations to Mr. Ed Zink. Also, I want to thank the Beaver Creek Youth Council for being here. As was mentioned briefly, I had the pleasure of serving as president of the Youth Council, and it wasn't that long ago where I was on, sitting where you're at, addressing the council, and I just encourage you to continue to stay involved. And some ideas can't work, but some ideas, you just can't do them now, so no idea is not worth trying. So just anything, you know, anyone up here is willing to help you, and make sure that you have a great organization. And other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
I actually, the, the street crew is terrific, and it's a lot of work to move that kind of snow around. Occasionally, mailboxes or things get knocked over, and I actually saw the Beaver Creek staff putting up a new post for somebody's mailbox on Dayton Zini Road today. So for those who, in the audience, who may have experienced something, and don't just grin and bear it, know that, that you can ask for the staff to come out and look and determine if it was their fault, and get it fixed, so, sorry that that happens, but those are big trucks, and it's hard to get that snow moved around. I think that, I've never, I've worked in city government for forty-some years, I'm old.
I wouldn't.
And, and I've never had minutes that, that say on there, "Tardy". I don't know if Beaver Creek, the unique city that does this, because most cities don't, had a problem a few years back, I wasn't on the council at that point, so I really don't know how it happened, but I would make a motion that, that our minutes remove that, because I think it just belittles people. You know, we are not paid very much, we don't have a problem with being tardy, we don't have a problem with people not doing what they're supposed to do. So having that word on our minutes, to me, is belittling, and I don't care for it. So I would move that it be struck from the minutes.
A few years ago, a council member asked that it be put on, so it's up to you guys what you want to do.
So I would move that it be removed.
That terminology, I would agree with you, I think. Councilmember Van, the, we still need to, the minutes still need to reflect, because we've already excused that person generally, it just, just needs to reflect when that member joined.
Right, no problem.
The time, if Councilmember such-and-such joined us at five after seven, or something like.
Yeah, that's fine, you just, every time I look at those minutes, I think, it really is negative to me, and every time I see it, I go, this is ridiculous. So I would like to have it striked, and I make that motion that we, because we probably need a motion to make it change, if there would be a second for that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We'll have some discussion, go ahead.
I don't think we can make motions in council time.
I don't think we can make motions in council time, it's not on the agenda. I mean, we would have to come forward, whatnot.
I would disagree, I think we can't.
I think, I think you can, I'm not sure, though, I think, I think actually just an instruction to the clerk.
That would all be needed, as long as the clerk's fine.
At this point, I don't think we really need a formal motion, I think just, let's just use the term.
I just want it to happen, so I just was trying to figure out how to make it happen.
I don't recall there was a formal motion last time, I think it was just a request.
Okay.
So the request is no longer to use the word "tardy", so that will be the, that will handle that.
Do we have anybody that has any disagreement with that?
Yeah, that's what you need to know.
Alright, then the instructions are there. The, but yeah, as far as making a motion, it can be, that's the other thing, we could have done it, but we don't need to, alright.
I've got a couple more things.
Uh-oh.
You and I had learned about an app that we could have on the phone that would help our citizens communicate with us better, and I just wanted all the council members to know that there's a video that I was given by my civic apps as an example, and our, Mr. Sarah has also had an opportunity to look at this, and just look at it, because it's kind of interesting, it is a, a way that people can use their smartphones to communicate with any of us or with the city, and if they're driving over a pothole, they can push the button and say, "Here's where it is", and, and the city will know where it is. It's just something to look at, so I sent that to you this afternoon.
I think it had GPS built into it or something, didn't it, to where they, boom, there you go.
Yeah, because we've got smartphones, now we can do it. So it's just, I don't know that we want to pay for it, I don't even know the cost, I only know that I saw the video. So there's a whole big difference between seeing the video and knowing how much it costs. I just was urging you to, to look at it, and it's something for us to think about. I went to the, and several people went to the viewing for John Williams. He was a police officer for Beaver Creek for, I think, at least fifteen years. He had already served twenty-five years for the, for the Dayton Police Department. It was pretty impressive that the Dayton retired police officers dressed in uniform and marched out and had a, a guard standing next to his ca- casket during the entire viewing, I was so touched that they did that ceremony, very touched. They've got a lot more people and a lot more, but it was very, and, and what John Williams did for us in Beaver Creek was he was kind of a new position that was different. He, he had a gift to explain things, and he became a community educator at a time when we needed citizens to befriend community policing and better understand working in your neighborhoods and stuff, and I think that, that communication skill and the police department adding at the time was a real plus. And the other thing I wanted to mention is I had a, we were talking about becoming a city of peace, and I had a, a small group of citizens, we met today to talk about different things we might do in the community to celebrate being a city of peace. We're, we're lucky to have the Meditation Center in, in Beaver Creek, and they are members of the UN, and they are very strongly engaged in the peace process, and they are willing to be partners in, in doing some things, so just wanted you to know, I'll give you a report on specifics when the committee comes up with a specific, but for today, we were brainstorming, and, and it was a possible, nice possibilities.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Upton.
Thank you, Mayor Stone, I've got the high privilege tonight of discussing and highlighting our anniversaries from our staff members, I think there's a slide coming up, and we have quite a few tonight. There we go, so please bear with me here. We've got Jeff Fioreta in our police department for twenty-six years, Sean Sumner, police, twenty-six years, Don Cole, police, celebrating twenty-two years, Mark White in our public service department for nineteen, Lee Duteal over at the Senior Center, sixteen years, Andrew Amberm, golf, fourteen, Mike Gafkin, golf, for fourteen years, Mike Hamilton, also at our, our golf course for fourteen years, Greg Weisert in our police department for ten, Emilio Balagar in our public service for nine, Clayton Campbell, public service for nine years, Zach Hughes, celebrating nine years with our Parks Department, Kevin Vance, public service for nine years, Zach Wiki with Parks for eight, Karen Mahaffey, police department for seven years, Mike Winterbottom, public service for six, Jerry Russell, public service for six, Joel Diaz with our police department at six years, Chris Beisner, police department at six years, Dave Durkin, police for six, Sarah DeBoer, police for four, Lori McIntosh, police for two, and Joel Schuler is celebrating his first anniversary with the city. So, a lot of, a lot of tenured members of our staff, and we really appreciate everyone from their first anniversary, each other twenty-six, spending it here with Beaver Creek. Also, I wanted to highlight that currently, we have our boards and commissions appointments, we're seeking applications for the appointments for our board and commissions. The city has thirty vacancies that'll be up this year, that we'll be appointing to, starting, I believe, all of them start March first. So, you know, if you're interested in serving the community as a volunteer, you can serve anywhere from our Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Parks, Park Board, all kinds of different ones, our Youth Council, I think there's some vacancies there as well, but just a variety of options for you to get involved with. So I encourage folks at home or in the audience, get on the website and check that out. And that was all that I had for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just two quick things, I want to first welcome and thank the Boy Scouts, the troops, and our Beaver Creek Youth Council for being here tonight. I think it shows tremendous character of all of you, forgiving of your times and volunteering in our community, and I know both our community and yourselves will be benefited by that, so thank you so much for being here. I would also like to quickly thank our staff, they are absolutely fantastic, I know a lot of you know we had our advance last weekend, and they put on a lot of information that was extremely beneficial. I just naturally question everything that comes before me, and as soon as I had a question, and it seemed like the next slide they already prepared answered the question that I had. So we are very fortunate to have the staff we have, and I wanted to acknowledge them and thank them for all their help, not just last weekend, but throughout the entire year.
Alright, thank you. Anybody got anything for the good, before we move on? Alright, next on the agenda is citizen comments. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all? Please come forward, give us your name and address, and try your hardest to keep it to three minutes.
I will. Pat Barton, two-one-zero-nine-Wichwood-Drive, wanted to thank you for acting on the citizen input over the past few months on miracle, miracle marijuana, medical marijuana. If there are issues that can be shared with a citizen team that can help answer any questions or concerns that maybe were raised during the retreat, I know some team members that would like to help get you the information that you might want, and I dare propose a board or a commission to help address these questions or concerns, so. We're not sure what's on everybody's mind, but information and facts are good, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight that would like to address council? None of the scouts have something on your mind? No? Anyone? Last call. In that case, we will close the citizen comment section. Next item is executive session, Councilmember Upton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to enter into the executive session pursuant to Section one-twenty-one-point-two-two of the Ohio Revised Code for the Purpose of Consideration of the Purchase of Property for Public Purpose, the Sale of Property at Competitive Bidding, Preparing for, Conducting, or Reviewing Negotiations or Bargaining Sessions with Public Employees.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session, as read. And may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Literal?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes, and for those out in TV land and those in the audience, there will be no decision, and we, we will reconvene here to adjourn, but there will be no decision coming out of the executive session. You're more than welcome to wait, but it will no longer be on TV the rest of the evening. But with that being said, we're going to take a five-minute recess to go shake a few hands, and then we'll go into, into our executive session, thank you.